Take their seats at the dais. It is now time for the regular meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education. Roll call. Mr. Gorman.
President.
Dr. Jeffrey is out of town on business. Dr. Lowe is approaching the dais.
Here.
Mrs. Malley?
Here.
Mrs. Mangano is home with, I believe, sick children if I understand correctly. Mrs. Okerson?
President.
Mr. Thor is out of town on business. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Here.
A quorum is present. Please rise to salute the flag and then remain standing for a rendition of our national anthem from our gribbling second grader Avery Frick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice-
Justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
I believe Mr. Bon Giovanni is coming up. Hang on just-
It was a secondary report. This is an uncorporated report. I understand that you might have some people watching from home on the watch table, right? Was this going in here or touched on for the second time?
It was a secondary report. I had someone in the chair. Sure. Thank you very much.
So, announcement by the president as read by the secretary. Adequate notices this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the secretary on January, the whole is punch right through the number, 2019. It is now time, the board is in need of an executive session. Mr. Bon Giovanni, if we could take a brief recess before the executive session to recognize the board's hard work and then go into executive session. If you have a move or a second or sir.
Move it.
Please note the items for this evening will be the HIB report, an update on contractual negotiations, and that is it, correct, Mr. Preston?
Correct.
You have no personnel this evening, correct? And that is it. The board will be in executive session. Replaced at the dais, the board is back in session. May we take the minutes, sir?
Please.
Move or a second or please?
Move it.
Move by Ms. Malley, second by Mr. Miller. May I take it around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, six votes in favor, none opposed. The correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. President of the board, Mr. Mark Bon Giovanni, your comments, sir.
Just a few. One, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Isola. He had sent us an email that even though we really lucked out with the weather and escaped the problems that some other places had, we know that administration was on top of it and ready and prepared, and we thank you as always for caring about the children and the staff. Howell has been asked by New Jersey School Boards Association to be the keynote at the technology conference they're going to have, and it's another example of Howell leads, so that's pretty nice news. We have strategic planning coming up, we're excited about that. I know we have a number of people who had already signed up. It looks like it's going to be a good mix of the community between staff, parents, community members who really are not participating in the schools at this point, meaning they have no children, and even returning students. So, we're very much looking forward to that happening. I know we have some good news that has come out of the ESIP program, and Mr. Sanisak, I'm going to throw that part to you.
Thank you, sir. The ESIP is going along well. I believe Ms. Malley will cover some of that in her report this evening from operations. We opened bids and were able to fill in the blanks. If you looked at the agenda up until Monday, or Tuesday, I always forget that holiday, up until Tuesday, they were blanks, and we did have the engineer's recommendations. So, this evening in the 6,000 series will be the awarding of the labor and the equipment for the first of the HVAC in the rest of the building, and I'm sure Ms. Malley will put more on that as the evening progresses. The solar panels are going well, and the lighting is probably 80% done, and then there's a number of smaller projects going on, the chillers and boilers at some of the other buildings. But the project is going well, and we look forward to both the cost savings and the facility improvements.
Great. And the last thing I'm going to mention is that people may have seen that January had been declared recognition of school boards throughout the state, and we appreciate that. And I'm going to take the presumption here that I can speak for the entire board, but I think if you talk to any of us individually, it's nice to have been recognized, but I think most of us truly believe it's our privilege in service to be able to serve the community in that respect. So, it's nice to hear, but in a lot of respects, we're the lucky ones. That's it for me. Pardon me?
Now, time for the superintendent's report. Superintendent of the board, Mr. Joseph Isola, your report, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Bon Giovanni. So, some of our points will be a little redundant, perhaps I'll put a little more details behind some of the announcements because there's so much exciting news coming out of it first. I will provide my update for the month. I also had on my report the update of the ESIP. I have drafted a letter as per our conversation last year with community interactions. If you remember, sir, they wanted to make sure the community had awareness for what was happening. It's some heavy construction that's going on sometimes throughout the community, and parents and students see cranes every once in a while, and workers. So, the letter is just updating the community, and it's going to be blasted out tomorrow, telling them that, hey, it's okay you see these workers, this is the good news, this is the fruit of our labors, and we'll talk about some of the benefits to that work. Of course, as Ms. Malley has pointed out on a couple of occasions, ultimately concluding with climate control in our eight buildings that currently do not have that for our instructional spaces. So, it's just a little letter to the community to say, hey, everything's okay, the work is good, it's all part of the ESIP plan that we've talked about, and just keeping people updated so that they remember what's happening throughout the community, because communication is certainly an important part of any school district's work. So, we're certainly excited to be able to keep the individuals in our community in the know. One of the things Mr. Sanisak and I have worked on with our municipal partners and indirectly our county partners is the polling, the election process as it relates to utilization of our school buildings. As you all know, currently, eight of our buildings are polling sites whenever there is an election. We're working with our municipal partners to spark conversation with the county about finding alternate locations for the polling that we should know more by the end of this month. We'll keep you updated. Once we get that information, we'll finalize our school calendar and get that out to the key stakeholders, because if there's no elections happening in the school buildings, that may be a day we open up for school like we did last year. As Mr. Bon Giovanni will recall, we spoke about opening on Election Day with our PTA, PTO presidents as well as our Community Interaction Group, and there was a general understanding that productive school took place, and while there was some anxious folks really between the partnership with the police department and the fine work of the school district, school was actually a fairly productive, a very productive day, and there was no risk or concerns that elevated anyone's reasoning to think that their children were unsafe. I think the bigger thing we battled during that week is it's normally the teachers convention, and a lot of parents like to take the whole week to escape to Florida or something like that, and that's always a parental choice. You know, we encourage them to send their kids to school when open, but when we find out more about the polling sites, we'll be able to make a more informed decision about the calendar for 1920, school year 1920, and so we'll be talking about that in the coming months, certainly hopefully by February, we'll have that all buttoned up and out to the community. And look, even if we reduce from eight to seven, I think that's good work, right? Less traffic in the building, the better. So, I want to make sure you all had an understanding of what was happening there. As you know, our federal government has been on shutdown, and there are many, many federal employees who are not receiving paychecks from Mrs. Calendar's office, and Mr. Sanisak also took a look at it. We posted on the website today a reminder that certainly federal workers, but anyone who has an income change may be eligible for free reduced lunch, and circumstances are such that there's no embarrassment in that. The fact of the matter is if we have community members who are no longer receiving income, that could be devastating to their families, and we wanted to make sure the community was aware that that application could be revisited, and perhaps they would find themselves eligible, and you know, the kids would not have to be, you know, the families would have to be burdened with the purchasing of lunch, but rather it would be either a reduced rate or, in fact, it could be free depending on the family's situation. So, we always want to make sure we're looking out for our members of our community and certainly the children within our schools. This is a new conversation and very important, and I believe, is it, Mr. Gorman, are you the chair of advocacy? I apologize with the new chairs on. So, I would like advocacy with the board's permission to consider taking this on. There's been, I almost said Governor Sweeney, and I don't know why it would slip like that, but Senator Sweeney's office, in terms of consolidation of school districts, regionalization, if I may use that term, Causeine spoke about it some years ago, for those that followed this, this has reared its head again, and there's a lot of conflicting conversations out there about this topic. As you know, we send to a regional high school district, we are a K-8, there is conversations that all non-K-12s would disappear. There's conversations if you have fewer than 3,000 students, not us, he would disappear. You know, the small communities such as Farmingdale, our fine neighbors right here, are too small, they should be consumed by how, there's a lot of different conversations out there regarding this, but being part of a regional sending school district, I would ask this board to remain very active in this conversation and aware of any bills that may be floating. We don't anticipate, it's a big election year, we don't anticipate anything happening in the immediate election year because that would be too controversy in terms of reelection for politicians, but we do think that this is something that's on the radar of certainly a handful of powerful elected officials. So, we want to make sure that we're having a voice in that, and we're aware and following that. So, if it's the president's pleasure, if advocacy can add that to one of their watch list items, I think that would be prudent upon this board and in the best interest of this district. We've learned throughout the years, it is the squeaky wheel that often gets the oil. We must be advocates for our situation. I believe the Howell Township community loves its schools and enjoys the local control that it has here, and that has kind of been the rule in this state, and I don't think, and had an opportunity to meet with the regional partners today, I don't think anyone would be excited about that. I don't think Freehold Regional would want to make a 40,000-student school district. I don't think that's the intent of anyone's conversation, but unfortunately, there's collateral damage when the legislation, or when there's legislation that's passed with the best intentions, there's always collateral damage, and I would hate for us to be part of that collateral damage. So, I would ask that consolidation be something that the advocacy group, yes?
If I may, Mr. Gorman and I, as the advocacy, or Mr. Gorman as the advocacy chair and I, have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00, and that is on the list to discuss-
Awesome.
-the path to progress. So, it is definitely, and we have looked at it in the past.
Great. So, thank you for that. Some upcoming events? Yes, sir?
No, I would just say that one of the things we've talked about, and again, it would come to the board, is we don't only have to wait for a piece of legislation, but when there's an issue that's of concern, that you know, that we feel we should act upon, much like we did with the park question and prepared a letter of advocacy explaining our position to help other, you know, people in the education community understand the implications of park, similarly, we could perhaps, if it's the will of the board and the administration, we can do something in the same manner, and that paper could be updated or changed at different times. But we don't have to wait for a bill, and as Mr. Isola said, that may not come immediately. But the important thing is to be able to educate and inform elected officials and other people who have some responsibility in this area to get a better understanding of what the implications would be if we went to a regionalization and had 40,000 students in a district.
Things I think I would add there, and it goes back to the letter that we did the last time, is that with Mr. Miller's involvement with Monmouth County School Boards, with my attending, the Board of Delegates at New Jersey State, New Jersey School Boards Association, once we have that letter prepared and have discussed it amongst ourselves, there's always the opportunity to share it. I do think it's an important advocacy piece for, you know, board members across the state. I mean, there are so many of us, and we are elected officials, we certainly have a strong voice, and it'd be a good thing to make sure that we share that with other districts to see if they, you know, care to be involved in something like that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Just some upcoming events that I wanted to share with the community and the board. We have the good fortune of having our Commissioner of Education, Dr. Repelit, joining us this Friday, the 25th. He is visiting three of our schools who won the bulletin board contest, so that's always exciting to have the opportunity to share some of the greatness that exists here with our state officials, and as I said, the commissioner will be visiting Gribling, Newberry, and Ramtown on this Friday. So, if I learn any of those details in advance, I'll be sure to keep the board aware of what's going on. On February 28th, throughout our district, many of our schools, if not all, will be participating in a day known as Rare Your Jeans Day. It's from the Fighting Hard Foundation, which is a foundation formed by a former student that is now a ninth grader and her sister, a 10th grader, at Howell High School. They have, both of them, specifically Jonah, who's now the ninth grader, has a rare chromosome disorder and a rare illness, and she works really hard to bring awareness to children who have unique situations, and works to raise awareness for these kids so they're not isolated and they don't feel alone, and that they recognize that, you know, differences are okay. I had the opportunity to meet with her yesterday in my office. What a source of pride for all of us, I mean, what a great young lady. She was our student achiever here at Middle School North last year, and it was just so gratifying to hear her speak so articulate and with such passion about her cause, and her and I were talking how this work ties directly to being the light and the work that we're talking about throughout our district. So, that information went out to all 12 schools, and many of the principals responded that they'll be encouraging participation in Rare Your Jeans Day, February 28th. There are many schools that participate in this program throughout the county already. As Mr. Bon Giovanni previously mentioned, New Jersey School Boards Technology Conference is scheduled for March 8th in Howell Township. I received a phone call and an email asking us to do the keynote. We have a conference call scheduled for tomorrow, I believe, with the folks who are organizing the conference, and we're very excited to be participating in that conference. Also coming up on April 17th is our Student Board of Education Day. We are very excited about that. It's our third annual Student Board of Education Day, and in May, the following month, May 21st, that follows with the Student Government Day for our seventh grades students where they actually mirror the town council and have a great day with our municipal partners. So, really some wonderful events for us to look forward to. Two other topics. One is, we, as you know, we've served as a sister school district to New Taipei City in Taiwan. We've had three years of visits from our friends from across the globe, and they've learned a lot from best practices that we've shared and opportunities for them to see the work that's happening in American schools and in New Jersey schools, and certainly specifically here in Howell, as well as they've had some students come and visit last year, and really has been a wonderful sharing and experience for both our educational partners from Taiwan as well as our own teams of educators and students. It has really been a gratifying partnership. Well, I'm pleased to inform you, and you've heard me informally say this, that they've invited us to speak to their district and do a presentation there, as well as visit, a week-long visit there. The reason why I present this is because it gives me great pride as superintendent that we were selected to travel internationally and present to a team of educators from Taiwan about the practices that are happening here. So, that visit is going to be, it will be a fully expense-paid trip. It will happen when we are not in session, it will happen over spring break. So, we will be sending two educators, Mr. Preston is one of the two, the other may be another member of the senior team or supervisory team or even a teacher. We're working through that final detail now. They've afforded, they're taking care of the accommodations in Taiwan, and they've afforded us what equates today for $1,600 for travel. We've reviewed that with some of our other district partners locally, and that is ample money to travel to Taiwan and back for each individual. So, international travel, any travel out of state must be board-approved, even though this is not on school time, as Mr. Sanisak would point out, if Mr. Preston goes there and we lose him, his wife may be upset with us, and we'll have to have insurance.
She may be happy, too.
Yeah. So, I'll be looking for, and Mr. Sanisak will word this for us, your support in allowing two of our employees to travel internationally, to present, to visit schools, to bring back their learnings, our learnings, to our district. The one snafu is, based on the currency at any given time, they are pledging 50, I'm going to use the word dollars, I don't know what their currency is, I apologize, I don't believe it's yen, but 50,000 Taiwan dollars for the travel, which currently equates to $1,600. We're going to book a flight, when the exchange happens, if it goes below $1,600 and we paid $1,600, we will look for some district reimbursement, you know, much like we would if we traveled to any workshop, any of our staff, teachers, administrators, senior team, we do that regularly. So, I don't know, good luck wording that, Mr. Sanisak.
Well, I was going to say, also, I have some good news, and Dr. Richens is a workaholic like we are, and I just, at 7:12 this evening, got his approval. That was another thing. Even though it's not district expense, it needs his approval, and the only condition he put on is that we do state the cost that Taiwan is paying, so I will have to learn the conversion rate on their currency, so with your permission, I will word that tomorrow when I find that out, but it will be to send Mr. Preston and one to-be-named-in-the-future employee, fully expense-paid, but the motion will cite the cost that Taiwan is paying, and the understanding will be that the plane ticket will be reimbursed should the exchange rate fall below $1,600. That will be a board expense. I'm sure you can all assume that it's not going to be a dramatic amount compared to a trip to Taiwan. So, I will word it with your permission, it will be A1.
Please. Mr. Isola, just real quick on that, it's interesting because I have a very vivid memory, Mr. Miller was standing next to me at the time, and you were there, that I remember asking the gentleman who was in charge of the delegation that day, that they were here last, and asking him, out of curiosity, you know, there are so many districts you could visit across the country, and this is the third time you've come back here, and why would you have come back here each time? And he couldn't have spoken more highly about the stuff they see here, they just have no clue about over there, and how much they felt they learned from every one of their visits here. I mean, he, you know, like I said, he could have gone anyplace, but they've come back here three years in a row, in a row, very intentionally.
Yes, and we're very proud of that, and it is a statement of success of our entire educational community, the staff in the buildings, the administrative team, the board's support of that type of work, and it has been beneficial, I will say that. So, we're excited about this opportunity, and I look forward to receiving your support later this evening when we vote that. And my final topic, and perhaps the most important for this moment, is, as Mr. Bon Giovanni also mentioned, it is Board Appreciation Month, and each month, we take the opportunity to express thanks and gratitude for having nine volunteers that are truly dedicated to the success of this district. They put aside their personal interests or desires to do what's right for our students and our staff time and time again, and as I have said to you on numerous occasions, I'm not only the proudest superintendent, I am the most fortunate superintendent to work with a board such as this one and previous boards in my five years as superintendent. So, thank you for all you do, not only for the students of this district, but for our entire community, the staff, and for everything else that goes along with providing great schools for a community. The work you do should not go unnoticed, and you should take great pride in your accomplishments. So, thank you all with great sincerity on behalf of the entire school district. We wanted to express that gratitude. And with that, sir, my report is concluded.
Mr. Sanisak, I'm going to add one other thing that I should have mentioned before. There is an organization, and Mark Bijon, who is one of the prior New Jersey's Board of Education, State Board of Education members, is involved in a program, SCL4US, which is an organization that is part of a national network. It's replacing New Jersey School Health and Climate Coalition. Obviously, that's what they're dealing with, is climate health and social learning. This committee is just starting up, some of the paperwork is in front of the commissioner's desk now. They are having a meeting near the end of February, and he's invited me to attend that meeting to see what involvement we may or may want to, might not want to have in that organization. So, sometime near the end of February, I'll be attending a meeting on behalf of the board. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Moving along, it is now time for the committee update and updates and liaison reports. Mr. President?
Mr. Gorman, starting from my left.
I don't have anything directly to report at this time for legislative advocacy or policy. I guess we will get into contact with the members of the committee to check their availabilities for scheduling, and of course, I'll just note again what our superintendent said about the issue of regionalization, and of course, that will be foremost in our consideration when we do meet.
Great. Mrs. Malley?
Yes, thank you. Operations has met on January 16th, and Mr. Isola and Mr. Sanisak have stolen some of my thunder, but that's okay. I will repeat what they said in my report. All right. So, the first thing we did was we agreed to a meeting schedule for the year with the understanding that it is subject to change. We will be meeting on Wednesday nights, basically once a month for the year. In transportation, the Ramtown-Greenville Road Bridge has officially reopened as of Friday, January 11th, woo-hoo, which has relieved traffic in the area. Parents were notified if any changes were to the bus route or timing. We also discussed a recent article in the Asbury Park Press about Lakewood bus cuts, which could affect our ability to get contractors for our routes, so it's something we are going to be keeping an eye on, Mr. Sanisak is going to be keeping an eye on. Transportation, safety training by recent New Jersey law has now increased to twice a year. a year. Drivers over 70 need double physicals, and drivers over 75 need triple physicals, and they need a doctor's note to basically say that they're fit to drive the bus. This is legislation that's recently passed, I believe, as a result of the horrific Paramus bus crash. Okay, and we're moving on to sustainable NJ. Lindsay Kleynext, is that right? I did good, okay. Lindsay has uploaded 90 district points for the review, and an additional 50 points will be available once policies are approved. We have a few we are moving to the policy committee, Mr. Gurman, such as green cleaning, green purchasing, promoting physical activity, basically things that we're already doing, but we need the official policy in place to get the points. So I believe that that's been passed on to you already for your pleasure. Okay, in addition, each school, if they have a green team, will get them points, and then at least one school activity, and we'd be on the path for bronze awards for all of our schools. So we're well in that direction, which is very, very exciting. We're looking forward to the announcement of the NJEA-sponsored grant winners. We have applied for some of those grants, and we're very excited to see if we've been awarded any of them. The next grant app deadline is March 15th for the PSENG-sponsored grants. We also discussed bottle fill stations for each school and how that may be achieved. That's something that I would like to see happen, but we'll see, hopefully. Food services is, we have added salad bars to both of our middle schools, and I've heard good things about this, so I think that's exciting news, that kids can get fresh salad. It's not something like, they can't serve themselves the salad, there is still someone serving them, but they can pick and choose what they want on their salads, so it's very nice. Okay, ESIP update. It may sound like projects going well. That's exactly what Mr. Sanisak said. Solar should be up and running with district using the electric by February. The LED lights are brighter, as you can see, inside and out, using less electricity, and it's also, the outside lights are helping a lot with the security of the buildings. Mr. Len was very happy about that. The HVAC contracts are out and bids are coming in. There's two items on the consent agenda this evening in the 6,000 section, and that is for the work to move forward with Ardina, which is what Mr. Sanisak addressed in his comments. So Ardina will be the first building completed for this spring, air conditioning in the classrooms for this spring in Ardina, and the others following for September. That is the goal, it's very exciting. Okay, and then we moved on to safety. And again, continuing efforts, working with municipality to get polling places out of our schools, thank you, Mr. Isola, and into private buildings. Like he said, there are eight current buildings being used, and even if we can get three out, that would be a major accomplishment for the coming school year. We've also added substitute secretaries and office staff to our Safe School Platform video training program, as well as training on entry protocol and badging. The volunteer card, I had spoken about in many previous meetings, it's in the schools, it's being used, and so far, we've gotten very positive feedback from parents and volunteers that come in and have the card, then they have the information at their fingertips in case they need it. The last thing in safety was one issue that's been an ongoing concern, and that's the bathroom doors, and the hardware's being updated, so when wave is activated, the doors will demagnetize, close, and lock. They are or will be held open with magnets similar to fire doors, so when the wave system activates, they'll close, just like fire doors do, so that if there's a child that's in the bathroom, when wave is activated, they would be behind a closed locked door as well. So that's very important. And when we moved on to any other items that arise, Mr. Miller brought up the merger of St. Veronica's in Howell and St. Aloysius in Jackson, and concerns that it may affect busing, and Mr. Sanisak assured us all that it will not affect our busing in any way when that merger occurs, which is good. Okay, that concludes my operations report. However, I am also wanted to notify the board, as a delegate assembly is coming up, the next New Jersey School Board's Delegate Assembly is May 18th. And if we want to include any resolutions for the delegate assembly to consider, that deadline is March 5th. And it came to mind, Mr. Gurman, when you were mentioning about writing a letter about this, perhaps it's something that we want to consider, writing a resolution and potentially reaching out to the other school districts in the region for them to also piggyback onto our resolution for the delegate assembly. This is something to consider. That concludes my report. Yes?
Just, and the St. Aloysius and St. Veronica merger, it will have no impact on busing so long as the merger does not create a change in enrollment. If students either enroll there because they like it better as a bigger school, or if students unenroll and come back to our district, those will, but the merger itself will have no impact. Just wanted to clear that up. As you said what I said, I wanted to be clear.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Sanisak.
Any other questions on that report? Then I'll just mention, I was fortunate enough to attend the committee, thank you so much. And one of the things that was just really nice to see was the fact that the prior citizen members of the committee all wanted to come back, you know, they felt that their voices were heard and that they were an important part of the committee. So it's nice to see when citizens feel they are important and decide to come back. One other thing before we get to Dr. Lo, I skipped over Mr. Thor, so I'll say something for him. I know Mr. Thor couldn't be here tonight, but he is having the first community interaction meeting scheduled for this Monday night at Stakeold in the Ramtown area. I don't recall the time, I believe it's 7 o'clock, is that 7 o'clock? So for anybody who's interested and wants to attend that, please reach out and come. So it should be an interesting meeting, I'm sure. Dr. Lo?
Okay, Professional Learning Committee met on January 14th. We discussed our potential goals and came up with some, we haven't come up with any goals. The committee discussed the concepts and the ideas, so we're going to ask our administrative liaison to draft some possible goals for our next committee meeting. And we'll look at them and revise the goals for formal adoption. Strategic planning, I don't want to go into that because that's been discussed here. Reflect on new board member orientation. The committee reflected on the new orientation that took place. The committee will check in with that newest member, Speaker Scott, after he has a chance to weigh in. We do this two-day day, that's already been discussed, so as to that, the data dashboard, the committee reviewed the data dashboard, they're coming to the entire edition of specific data points, lots of reviews of the regulations, our, and my.
Thoughts? Mr. Miller?
The Finance Committee has not met, however, our audit is complete and will be presented to the Finance Committee at our next meeting, which will be on February 13th at the board office. As you know, this is Board Appreciation Month. The Monmouth County School Board Association did put out a resolution to the BAs to support Board Appreciation Month, as well as put newspaper articles out. The Howard Times did pick up that newspaper article, and I just want to apologize to the board. I know our procedure is that the board president speaks on behalf of the board. When they printed the article for the Monmouth County School Board as president, they also put down a board member, so there was a little miscommunication there, so I did send a letter to them to see if they can correct that. Even though I am a board member, I was speaking on behalf of the Monmouth County School Board as their president, so I do apologize to the board members for that going out like that. The next Monmouth County School Board meeting is on February 7th at Colts Neck Inn, and Mr. Sanisak is one of our presenters. He's going to be presenting on how to read BA's report, and we also have Boards Gone Wild by the Weiner Lawyers Group that evening, and starts at 6:00 PM dinner and 7, 6:45, I'm sorry, will start the evening of presentations.
It's on a Wednesday?
It is on a Wednesday, yes, to seem like it's operations this time because of Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
If I can add, I'm sorry, I seem to be adding to every committee report. I just believe it's important to point out, Mr. Miller, and I know everybody understands it, that's present tonight, but the audit was delayed because the state delayed the numbers, and it was not because of anything on our part, and I just think that's important to go on the public record when we say that we're receiving our audit in February when it was due December 5th. So it was a delay on the state, just want to be clear.
And there is going to be a delay once again, from what I understand, right, with the governor?
Well, that's the budget, not the audit, yes. The governor has gotten an extension for the budget hearing this year. Last year, he got a two-week extension.
Which is typical when it's his first year.
Typical in the freshman year of a new administration, but this one is non-typical, but the legislature did vote him a one week in the budget calendar.
How will that affect you?
It's a timing thing. We always talk about the fact that, you know, it's a hurry-up-and-wait game. All the administration is doing their budgets and waiting to see whether there will have to be further cuts or whether we can expand some of the great initiatives that we have in mind. So it's a wait-and-see kind of game, and it's anybody's guess. You know, if you listen to the soundbites, you can drive yourself crazy.
You'll be ready, I'm sure.
We will be ready. There will be school in September.
We did give a speech.
In Woodbridge.
And he says that there might be some increase in the funding, so maybe we'll get less of a cut this year than we're supposed to get, but we are projected for a cut if we follow what was put out last year.
What S2 had originally said, yes.
I just wanted to follow with Mr. Miller's talking about the county meetings, and I would like to encourage board members to attend the county meetings. I've found them to be incredibly rewarding, and there's great knowledge being shared, and it's a great opportunity to meet other board members from other towns in the county to see what's going on in other districts, and dinners included. So it's all good. Okay, thank you.
The next month's speaker is terrible.
Which is kind of the reason why that becomes such an important one. I mean, I think there are a lot of board members across the state who really probably don't understand the BA report as much as they should, so it's going to be a great opportunity to learn from somebody who not only looks at it from a BA perspective, but having been a board member in the past can kind of give us that different view of it. Yeah, that's you. Anything else anybody up here has? That's it. Oh, unfinished business, right? Next?
No comments from the public, sir, if we follow the...
Sorry, my mistake.
Thank you. It is now time for comments from the public, may I?
Sure.
Whereas the Howl Township Board of Education determines the comments from the public may last 45 minutes, and they will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw, 0164.1, individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board. Mr. Bon Jevani, with your permission, may the floor be open?
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none, sir, may the floor be closed?
Please.
And now it is time for unfinished business, sir.
You will recall that at our last board meeting, Mr. Thor had brought about a suggestion in terms of looking at some committees and the possibility of forming it, and some of it had to do with material that we were actually, said we were going to put off until this meeting because we knew that Mrs. Calendar was sending out a survey that we thought some of that information would be useful for bringing back. Not only Mr. Thor, but Mrs. Mangano also had a significant interest in this. Since both of them are not here tonight, Mr. Thor had asked me if there was a possibility if we table it again until February, and I thought that would be fine to do, so I'm asking that we table that again. But in the meantime, Ms. Calendar, anything that could be shared or any information back yet in terms of those surveys that were going out?
I didn't bring anything with me, but we have gone through responses. We did have several people volunteer to be, you know, to work with us as an administrative team for pupil services and Special Education Department in terms of bringing comments or/or concerns or good news to us, whatever it happens to be, feedback from the various buildings on programs and services, et cetera. So we did have several people willing to do that, which we're excited about because really that is the purpose of a CPAG-type of organization, to interact with your administration in special education to improve programs and outcomes for students. And then we did get a lot of feedback on our, the parent series that we run in the district, topics that people might be interested in, their feedback on ones that they have attended before, so that was all positive, and, you know, a few ideas for sessions that maybe we hadn't gotten before, so that was great. We have a parent series next week that's been posted, and that's gone out to all parents. So yes, we did get some good feedback. We had 56, I think, or somewhere in the mid-50s in responses, which was more responses than we have ever gotten before in a survey, so we were happy about that.
Can I just say, too, I saw the parent thing, but it's during the day, which may be hard for working parents.
Yes, and we've held them at night before, but we haven't had attendance, but I did, offered to do, I got back to, but we could talk about that. But we all always put the contact information for our BCBA's on there as well, so that if somebody reached out and said, could you do a night session? We would certainly, they're willing and available to do that. The problem is that when we have done it in the past, we haven't gotten many parents, so we stopped, but we are happy to start it again if parents are willing to attend. They're more than open, I did ask them actually, but I'll talk to you after.
Ms. Calendar, the information you received back, is it in, or would it be difficult to put it in some kind of format to at least share, not all of it, but some preliminary information with the rest of the board, especially since two of the people who were very interested couldn't be here tonight, so that we could have an opportunity to look some of the information over before February?
Let me speak with Ms. Calendar tomorrow. I'm not sure that parents filling it thought it was public information, so...
That's fine, thank you.
I may want to respectfully decline at this moment, and let me look through that, Ms. Calendar, and if it's stuff that they understood would be shared with public or board, we'll be happy to do so. If not, I'll respect that we provide the confidentiality that was presumed by those who filled out the survey.
Makes sense, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's time for the consent agenda, sir. If we could take the current consent agenda and the A1, the trip to New Taipei for Mr. Preston and an employee to be named later, in accordance with the instructions of the county superintendent, which, it was great that we received that, we were waiting for his permission, but he did put the condition that I convert the currency, so I will fill that in tomorrow on A1.
Please.
Move it.
Moved by Mrs. Malley, second by Mrs. Okerson, may I take that around, sir?
Yep.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Gurman.
Yes, with the following abstention, 30014.
So, thank you. Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes, but I recuse myself on 3014 and 3015.
Thank you, so noted. The consent agenda and A1 are approved, six votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions noted for the record. May we take the second public comment, sir?
Please do.
Whereas the Howl Township Board of Education determines the comments may last 45 minutes and may, will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw and may be limited to three minutes each, the officer with respect to time and decorum, Mr. Bon Jevani, the president of the board, may the floor be open, sir?
Yep.
Other comments now? Still no comments? May we close the floor, sir?
Please do.
Move it.
Thank you very much.
No.
Yeah.
No.
No, it did not. If I may, can we reopen, sir?
Yes.
If we remove the single administrator...
I can recuse myself on just that one.
I was going to say, if we move the, I believe both abstentions were on the single administrator that's on there because of their conflict, so if it would benefit Mr. Preston, is there anything that would be urgent this evening? Would you like to move it without the one administrator on there and clear those? With your permission, sir?
Please do.
Can we reopen 3014?
Mm-hmm.
Removing the name Kathleen Steglierino on two entries there, may I take 3014 around again?
Please do. Please do.
I'm going to use the same mover and seconder, Ms. Malley, on the revised 3000-14?
Voting now?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Lo has a question.
Yes.
I just would like some clarification, in regards to making sure that the motion passed.
I'm sorry?
Sure.
Right.
3000-14
Okay.
Has a number of names on it. By removing this person from the voting, she's here twice, we're voting on everybody else, yes. Both Mr. Gurman and myself have to recuse ourselves here.
Okay, and how does that affect Mr. Preston?
Because it's personnel.
No, I was just asking him about the urgency, whether we needed to do it this evening or not. I'm sorry if I confused it with that.
To further clarify, Dr. Lo and the rest of the board, the person that we're pulling from that motion will appear next month or next meeting, when we have a full day to support that individuals.
May I? Ms. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Yes.
3000-14, with that change, is approved, six votes in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Isola, for pointing that out. And now we can adjourn again.
Motion to adjourn? Move it.